Was he getting?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our February 1st, 2022 Board Workshop. Appreciate you all being present this evening. As you know, we set up these workshops and our intention here is to be conversational. We will do all our presentations here from the table and although Darren and Chris will have PowerPoint presentations to back up what they're talking about, please don't feel like you're intruding if you stop them and ask questions. That's really the purpose of this. The PowerPoint is really meant just to drive the conversation. So we'll do that. But first item on the agenda is our public comment. In accordance with Board Policy BD in the Texas Government Code, Section 551.007, any citizen who has signed up in accordance with Board Policy BD may address the board regarding tonight's posted agenda items. I don't believe that we've had anyone sign up. We will move on to item two. Received pricing results, presentation for bond sale, series 2022. Mr. Rice.
Thank you. Good evening, Board members and Dr. Knoll. It is my pleasure to bring you a series of topics this evening. And we will start with the results of our January 11th bond sale. This was the third of five scheduled sales for our 2019 bond referendum. And this sale was to generate $177 million worth of proceeds. The two remaining scheduled sales we have in 2023, we have scheduled $105 million. And in 2024, we have the remaining $59.6 million to sell. So this is the bond buyer index. Mr. Robuck put this together for us and we appreciate him doing that for us. This buyer index consists of general obligation bonds that mature after 20 years. And you can see we're almost at all time historic lows. The historic low was 2.02% mid-2020. And January 1st, we're at 2.12%. So very excited, hit the market in really good shape. Just to kind of give you a rundown of how the sale went that day, we hit the market Tuesday, January 11th, right about 9:00 AM. And by 9:20, we had total commitment on our bond sale. So we had a lot of interest in ourselves. Raymond James did a great job of pre-marketing our bond sale. We actually oversold or two and a half times in some issues in some of those tranches. So we were able to use that and negotiate rates even further down so to come out with a better rate for us. So our current debt service is $1.95 billion. This sale had principal of $162 million. Interest was $81.1 million. Total was $243.1 million, leaving us a total debt service requirement now of $2,193 million. So this is the final sources and uses of the funds. As you can see, the principal amount of the bonds, once again, $162 million. We did sell at a premium, $16.152 million. Less our expenses that were $1.1 million, we received total proceeds of $177 million. So our all cost true interest rate for this bond sale was 2.332%. We're very excited about the results of this. And we really thank Mr. Robuck and his team, our bond counsel, Marcus Dietz, and all the underwriters and Raymond James especially, who was senior underwriter on this job. They did an excellent job. The average life of these bonds is 16.72 years. Our longest bond went out 25 years. So very excited about the results of this sale. And there is, this is just a schedule of events. As you can see, Tuesday, February 8th, the bond closing and we will actually receive the proceeds on that date.
Any questions on the bond sale?
I have one question. Can you go back to where it said total debt service? So that represents at 2.193 represents the total indebtedness for the district?
Yes, sir.
In the bonds?
Mm-hmm.
And so this is a complete schedule. So we go from 2022 to 2047?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And just to be clear, Mr. Rice, as far as our debt to value ratio, it's still much lower today than it was, say, 15 years ago, the ratio?
Yeah, 15 years ago, we were hovering right around the 5% range with our, and now we're about 3.5, 4. So we're in pretty good shape.
3.8 is what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think that's something that's significant. I know that our community talks about is that, yes, the overall debt service requirement is higher, but it's grown at a slower rate than our overall assessed value has. And so we've done a nice job of managing that debt over time. When you think about as a school district, we are not funded from the state to build buildings. It's not how the funding formula works. The only way we can build buildings is to go through this bond process. So this is the way it's intended to be done, but how do we manage it to keep it from becoming out of control? I know Darren has a lot of conversations with other districts and we see other districts that have grown quickly or they don't manage their debt quite as well.
Yeah.
You'll maybe compare our.
Our portfolio, I think if you looked at our tax rate, number one, but then our bond portfolio, what does it actually look like? Ours is very simple. We're straight bonds. They get very creative out there. Some of those districts trying to just make it work. If you remember back in the days when cabs were allowed and stuff, they got themselves in trouble. A lot of variable rate debt just to make it work for them that's really risky or was risky at the time. I wouldn't recommend it now, but you still see some doing that. So their structures are, number one, confusing, hard to explain. I think if you looked at ours, it's pretty straightforward. We know where we're going to be and we get a lot of praise from Mr. Robuck and his team for that.
Do we have some calls in there? I notice as you continue down the debt schedule, it gets fairly low as far as debt service requirements. I mean, we're paying $110 million a year.
We just have a lot of debt maturing off.
Right.
Is what you're seeing that. And there are some calls.
So we could call and pay them off early.
We could, yes, sir.
If the opportunities arise.
Now, if you remember a few years ago, they took the option of advance refunding away from us. We no longer do that.
Yes.
On a non-taxable.
Correct.
Advance refunding. We can refund advance on a taxable, but we haven't seen the advantage of that yet.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think they're there either.
Yeah.
Okay. And what part of that, as you see this drop off in years to come, is what provides for us this ability to have future bonds?
Capacity, right.
As we're going to hear tonight from Dr. Hines about growth and capacities. And that's what will allow us to have future bonds and not have to increase tax rate, right? That's how that works. And I know through the bond process, I have questions from the public asking me, why don't you pay cash for buildings? And I think one of the things that all of us to remember is that when we build a building, we expect to get 50 or 60 years worth of life out of it. So how would it be fair to ask a person that currently lives in a home to pay for an entire building that's going to have a 60-year lifespan and somebody that moves in five years from now, who basically come away free, have free use of a building? So by taking on sensitive debt, we're also allowing future residents to pay their share rather than asking everyone that's here today to fund the entire school building. So I think it's part of that other conversation.
And I read recently, I think in the Texas Association of School Boards Magazine, that the average age of buildings for all public schools in Texas is well over 40-something years old. And I would guess our average life is much smaller than that.
Yeah.
Not a whole lot smaller.
Average life of our buildings now?
50 years?
50 years.
Okay.
But currently, like what's the current age, average, current age for our buildings?
About 33.
No, 33.
33 years. Okay.
Where we are going to see, I think, interesting into the near future is you think about when the Woodlands was developed, kind of that boom period for Conroe ISD, where it built a lot of schools.
Right.
Like on top of each other. Those buildings are now reaching 30 years old. They're now reaching that point where it's going to be reinvestment time.
Right.
To make sure that we can extend their life out. So that'll just be an interesting process now as you see that generation kind of aging up.
Absolutely.
Because you don't, I mean, you think about even the Woodlands High School, which still seems fairly new, is a 28-year-old building at this point. So that.
Hard to believe.
It is.
That's what's happening. Okay.
What are the average costs for like a high school or elementary?
So.
Right now.
It's kind of ugly. I'm just going to guess. You know, high school, we built College Park for about, I mean, Grand Oaks for about $150. If I had to guess, if we had to build one tomorrow, it'd probably be $200?
Two and a quarter.
$250?
Or a high school, one high school.
And then the junior high that we're currently under construction, is it what price?
Construction is $62. And it should be closer to $9 if we were to get that second job today.
Okay. And an elementary, we just saw a $6 million increase from the last one to this one? $6 million increase for the exact same building. So no change at all of the building, $6 million in one year. And luckily, when we did build the last bond, we built in escalation. And that, you know, some people questioned us on that. Why did you build that in? They felt like we were playing games with the numbers. We weren't. We were doing it. And because we built in the escalation, we are still on budget with our bond. Had we put in 25 million for every elementary, we would be here tonight talking about which school do we not want to build? Because we don't have the funds to do it. So it's, Mr. Foster was right on with his estimations even pre-COVID. So that was great.
GDP was up 2021 significantly.
Yes.
Higher than past years.
Yeah.
I can see if you look at the inflation rate today, it's understandable.
Yep.
And one last point I'd like to make on our bond program. You know, we have 20, 25-year bonds. There are districts out there much longer.
Right.
You know, 30-plus years on their debt. So we've been very, very smart keeping ours to 25 years or less on that.
And is it the first report, isn't there a certain ratio that they want to keep debt below assessed value?
Yes.
What is that ratio?
Is it 10%?
Remind me?
I'm trying to.
I think it's 10.
10%?
10, okay.
Yeah, that was kind of like the gold standard.
We're less than 4.
Yes, we're nowhere near that threshold. Yes, sir.
Thank you. The rates were fantastic. You hit the market exactly at the right time.
Yeah, it was.
I wish we had more that we could sell now.
Yes.
To appreciate that rate a little more.
Right. It's good for our taxpayers.
Indeed. Okay. And there might be more conversation, I think, as we get into Chris's presentation here in a bit of this cost and things as we look forward. But next we'll move to item three, received health plan update. Mr. Rice.
Yeah, just wanted to bring an update on the health plan to the board. At the last presentation of the financial statements that Ms. Garza did, there were some questions, rightly so, on the progress of our health plan. And I just wanted to bring some clarifying information, some additional information to the board just to see the status of our health plan. So if we look at January, you can see January kind of rebounded, had a little bit of rebound in January. Total revenues, $4.5 million. Total expenses, about $4.3 million. So revenues over expenses for the month, almost $300,000. However, for the planned year, total revenues, $22.5 million. Total expenses, a little over $25 million. So our revenues are under expenses by about $2.7 million. Just participation in our wellness centers, just to touch base on that, we're still low. We're still in the 338 average. If y'all remember in previous years or previous presentations, we need to be 500-plus to really feel comfortable with break even on that. So we'll continue working on the clinic scenarios and stuff and hopefully bring something to y'all at the April Board Workshop to talk about the clinic. So there are a few key things to keep in mind that are largely out of anyone's control. And if y'all remember when we were adopting our health plan premiums and everything last year, you know, we expected a large increase in the 5% range or $2.5 million in health spend that related to a surge of elective surgeries and procedures for the 2021, 2022 plan year. And the reason there was a surge is because in the previous year, because of COVID, they didn't actually get to go to the hospital. So the board, y'all, allowed the plan to use the fund balance that is in the health insurance program to help fund this one-time surge in claims without passing it on to the plan members. Our current fund balance in the plan is a little over $7 million, so pretty strong fund balance in the self-funded plan. So we feel good about that. But also, other factors is that medical trend is up and that is 100% driven by the increased demand in medical services. And what we found is individuals with chronic conditions that didn't go to the doctor in 2020 got even sicker and are needing more extensive care in 2021. And this is outside of the COVID pandemic. There is a very noticeable increase in cancer spend across every one of Gallagher's clients, you know, which is also a consequence of them delaying care. Our large claimants are costing more and staying in the hospital longer. And COVID is not necessarily the primary driver behind this, although COVID has not helped. The Delta variant wreaked havoc, which you can see our claims in those two months that Delta was around. Omicron, as we know, has less severe symptoms, but it is way, way, it is much more contagious. COVID in all forms is driving up lab spends because of large endless demand in COVID testing. And then to always have to work around medical inflation, we know that's real. And then coming up, we see the potential impact on our pharmacy claims due to recent legislation allowing free over-the-counter COVID tests. So if somebody goes and buys a COVID test from your CVS or your Walgreens, they can turn around and turn that receipt into the plan and get reimbursed for that. So we will start seeing that hit our pharmacy. So now just looking at the pharmacy side of our plan. And if y'all remember, last plan year, we changed to Core Trust as our pharmacy benefit manager. And from that perspective, it's really too early to get data related to this change. We still believe the long-term effects of the arrangement where Core Trust and Optum are now partnered will deliver savings, but for all the reasons we just spoke about, the plan is also suffering, you know, the same increases in spend because of the increased demands. So now just talk about our health services admin RFP. We're currently in the third year of a three-year agreement we had with United Healthcare. We did have two one-year options to extend that contract. However, working with Gallagher, their recommendation is that they think that there is some savings in admin fees out there. So we decided to put an RFP out there for our admin services. So in November, we released an RFP for those services. January 4th, the bids were due. We received bids from United Healthcare, Cigna, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Aetna, and Healthcare Highway. I'm not familiar with Healthcare Highway, but I'm very interested in what type of proposal they'll bring to us. Starting tomorrow, the evaluation committee will review the bid responses. This evaluation committee is a subset of the larger employee benefits committee. It's seven members on that committee. That committee, working with Gallagher, will, you know, review the bids and, you know, will notify the finalists. Now, the finalists, we will probably for the first round, probably pick four to the five to have them come and do a presentation to the evaluation committee. Then that committee will pick finalists from that group and have them come and present to the full employee benefits committee in February. Hopefully, the employee benefits committee will see those reviews and then bring in a recommendation to the board at the March Board meeting. And then this will have a September 1, 2022 effective date.
Could you repeat those companies again? So it's United?
United Healthcare, Cigna, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Aetna, and Healthcare Highway. And before United Healthcare, we were with Aetna previously.
Is there anything in our contract with Gallagher that states we can't be with any of these other, with any of these other companies? Or we can be?
Similar, no, similar to what we ran into on the Stop Loss? No, ma'am, there's not.
Now, is the change with these, is this something that we're seeing other schools that also use Gallagher, they're also having to change their companies as well? Or is this just us?
You know, Gallagher's other clients, you know, we went with United before Gallagher was our consultant. And Gallagher has seen in the other bids that they've done, better admin rates come through. So we actually reached out to United Healthcare and said, are y'all willing to renegotiate your admin fees? You know, at this time? And no, they said, we have a contract, we're going to stick to it. And, you know, so we said, well, we're going to have to go out to bid. And they said, you know, okay, so here we are. Sir.
United Healthcare.
Yeah.
I had the same problem.
Yeah, so.
So this is for health services, which includes health benefits as well as pharmaceuticals?
The pharmacy is separate from the admin. This is just the admin of the.
The admin portion?
The admin portion.
Okay.
So there'll be limited disruption because your Aetna, Aetna will bid the same type of structure we have with the Kelsey and the Charter Plan, with the Memorial Herman and our ACO setup. They will bid that same setup across all that. So we'll have limited disruption to our employees as far as plan changes and doctors and stuff like that.
Okay. And so just to make sure I understand, we had the ability to continue our current contract if that's a choice?
Yes, sir.
But we've just been advised that other people are getting better deals than our current contract is. So we've gone out to try to get a better deal.
Correct.
And if there's not a better deal, then we can re-up at our current.
Well, we.
Once we've put it out there, we're out there, right?
Yeah, once we put it out there, we've foregone being able to extend our current bid.
Okay.
Regarding the clinic?
Yes, ma'am.
Have we ever had routinely or consistently the 500 people attend?
Pre-COVID, we did, yes, ma'am.
Pre-COVID, okay.
Pre-COVID, we had pretty good participation.
We were actually adding PAs to handle the additional load and expanding time windows and stuff like that to accommodate the increased visits. But since COVID, it's just, it's dropped significantly.
I wonder between COVID and just technology now, you know, I see a lot of online telehealth visits that you can do with your phone. You don't even have to go anywhere. And I wonder about the viability of continuing with the health clinic.
Yeah.
Versus having totally telehealth out there as an option.
If y'all remember in our plan design changes that we made last year, we made telehealth.
Right.
Free to our employees.
Right.
And there has been an uptick in the video conferencing for medicine. So that is a.
Yeah, I just wondered, at some point, we're probably going to have to make a decision about, is it worth keeping the clinic open versus pushing people to telehealth?
And another area.
It's the costs.
Yes, sir. And another area we're looking at is contracting with some of these urgent cares.
Yes.
For during the daylight hours, giving us discount rates or, you know, because they're kind of, you know, when you look in this part of Texas, there's one on every corner.
Absolutely.
So, you know, hopefully, you know, we can work some type of contract out to where our employees can go there and get these same kind of rates that we can offer at our health clinic.
Good. Well, I think there's, I think some opportunity for savings somewhere. I mean, the fact that Mark Cuban just started his own online pharmacy for generic drugs, I think is going to change that marketplace significantly in the near future.
Yeah.
What's that price or what's the cost of the clinic, do you know, for a year?
55,000?
Yeah.
So about $600,000 a year.
Okay.
And that is, that is just, you know, physicians, tests, their office staff. I mean, we provide the building, the infrastructure, everything like that, but just in admin cost. It's about $600,000 a year.
Mr. Rice, do we still have the smaller Conroe facility open?
Currently, we do not, no, ma'am. We have tried several times to open clinics in Conroe. They just, they just never take hold. They just never, they just never take hold, so.
Okay, any more questions? All right. Okay, we will move to item four, received preliminary 2022, 2023 budget overview. And this is, this is an area where we definitely are going to invite a lot of conversation. We need your feedback because as is always the case, the funds that are coming to us are finite, but the needs are great. And so there's just going to be decisions that have to be made as to how are we going to allocate the funds. The way the state funding formula is set up now, it creates difficulties. And I know Mr. Rice will mention this, but basically the state has created a situation where they're in charge of teacher raises now. They don't build that in for us, which won't necessarily have an effect on us next year, if we're in the second year. But into the future, it will have a really large effect on us. So and then as we are tackling and dealing with inflation and staffing shortages and all the things that every other employer in the world is dealing with, we have to make some decisions about how we will allocate, you know, potential pay raises for next year, you know, to different levels of employees. So there's just a lot of conversation here that we hope that you'll, you know, help give us some guidance so we can go to work in the coming months.
Thank you. This is our first look at the 2022, 2023 budget. You know, since it's a non-legislative year, we feel like we have a pretty good framework to start with. But as Dr. Knoll said, you know, it is a finite amount of money and we are looking for some guidance from the board on this. So we'll start with a look at the results of the past legislative special session this summer. Just one of the items that I don't, I'm sure y'all have heard about, but I wanted to bring to y'all attention. The legislature passed Senate Bill 1, which was a permanent increase to the mandatory homestead exemption. It raised it from $25,000 to $40,000, so a $15,000 increase. This change will take effect in tax year 2022, so it will affect the 22, 23 school year. With the passage of that, the state is holding districts harmless. However, with the way that House Bill 3 works on the MNO side of our budget, we will not realize anything just the way that formula works. However, on the debt service side, we'll see about $400,000 starting to come in from the state side for that fund to help us with our debt payments there.
How long does it hold harmless? I mean, just for the year or you think?
No, they'll hold us harmless for perpetuity.
Moving forward.
Oh, okay. All right.
And it's very interesting because it's hold harmless for years prior to 2023. So moving forward, we're kind of, we're kind of on our own. You know, we have to adjust to those new values.
And the thing to remember, anything that happens is really only happens for two years because then they go back to Austin, anything can change. So like, anything they do is really just a two-year move.
Yeah.
So like, hard to come back from that.
Right, no doubt. But it could just change again or do something different again.
But a $50,000.
Yeah, who knows, right.
In history, the hold harmlessness usually go away in a new legislative year.
That's right.
But for now, it's for perpetuity. But new legislative year comes up, they'll make some changes and hold harmless will get taken care of in the calculations somewhere.
Last time when they increased from 15 to 25, that was in 2015. And then they repealed the hold harmless in 2019.
Okay.
So we got it for four years and then they repealed it.
Yeah.
So these are our budget objectives for the year. We want to meet the needs for the 2022, 2023 school year. This year, we are opening Gordon Reed Elementary. Once again, we want to provide a competitive compensation plan. This year, we know that inflation is 7%, but that's month over month. That's compounding daily. And then we want to continue to provide the supplies and equipment for maintaining a safe environment for our students and staff. So probably the last few years, ever since House Bill 3 came out, y'all have heard me say this. This is the most important slide we'll look at this evening. Once again, this year, we're able to use 1,500 students for our growth number. That will bring our estimated enrollment number to 69,187. We got there very quickly. We're using 94% for our average daily attendance. And I think it's, and I have a note on the side, but you hear me say it all the time. And Dr. Knoll might want to speak to this. Our expenditure budget is based on our enrollment. However, we're funded from the state based on our average daily attendance. And I think Dr. Knoll might want to share some of his conversations.
It's a frustrating mathematical formula and it's one that I've had a lot of conversations with our state legislators about. I believe there are only two states in the country that still fund on average daily attendance because it's truly a misnomer. Like, we have to staff based on enrollment, right? And if 5% of the kids are out on any given day, it doesn't mean that we get to send home 5% of the teachers and not pay them. We have to pay 100%. And so especially in this now post-COVID world where attendance can be so variable, this makes this very difficult. As Darren's mentioned, 1% is $4 million. So if we come in 2% low next year, we'll be $8 million short in our funding. And it won't be based on enrollment, it just might be that more people keep their kids home when they're sick. So, you know, I've really tried to stress and make the point to our legislators. So, you know, I've really tried to stress and, and make the point to, to our legislators about getting off of the ADA and moving more to enrollment and not even in a plea to add more money to the pot. That's not, that's not my plea in this conversation. It's just redo the formula so that we know what we're getting instead of this variability of attendance causing us to be short in the end. So it's, it's, it's not a, you know, I do remind them that when they redid the formula, they made it where we only can give teacher raises if they put more money in the pot. So they, they do need to put more money in the pot moving forward so that we can give raises. But the conversation about coming off of ADA is really not about more money. It's just adjust the formulas and base it on enrollment so that we can know, uh, what our funding will be, so that's-
What did we budget this year with ADA?
Uh, for, and-
Well, we had 94%. That is, that is our traditional percentage. And you see, I have that highlighted because I was gonna bring that up. Our saving grace this year is that we grew 3,124 kids, not 1,500 that we sat our budget on. So we're, we're at 92%, we're hitting right on the mark where we thought we would be with ADA. So, and we were able to cover the, the additional costs that we're seeing with those additional kiddos with some of our ESER funds and stuff like that. So we're able to supplant our budget with, with some of those monies.
Yes, we have, we have a safety net with ESER funds that we built in. But I also believe that TEA will come in this year and offer some type of relief because every district in the state is dealing with this attendance issue. TEA does not have the authority to change the funding model. That's, that, that's going to require legislation. They can do a temporary something to help us this year. So there, there's oftentimes, we can do low attendance waivers for given days. They've asked us not to do that right now because they're looking at a more holistic solution. So I believe that we will get relief for this year in some way. But it'll be one of those like, that's for this year, but next year, if we come in, there may not be relief there.
Currently, there is only a, a hold harmless for the first six weeks.
Right.
And so that, that is all we have right now. You know, anything coming from TEA is, is that first six weeks, so.
But I believe that this latest, um, Omicron variant is gonna drive them to have to do something again now for the third, um, six weeks or, you know, just look at the year all the way around. So they'll, they'll have to work on that. But I, I think there'll be something coming there. Mr. Emman, I know you-
You, you said earlier that we, uh, incorrectly target 100% enrollment as far as the staffing side. Is that normally something that we're, we get to 100%?
Well, we do. I mean, because that's, we, we build it for that.
Yeah, and you said we have to, is that legislatively or is that, uh?
Well, you just have to, like, every kid has to have a seat. If a kid's enrolled, they need a seat, they need a teacher. So you have to have-
I was just looking for historically always at 94% or fairly accurate. Can we staff at like 95, 96%? Or is there some laws that you have to be trying to get to 100?
Well, no, because all of those kids, like, on any given day, 94% are coming, but 100% of them come on daily basis.
So Johnny might be gone Monday, but they're Tuesday.
Johnny's gone on Tuesday and somebody else is gone on Wednesday, but you can't just build a class with 35 kids because there'll be days that all of them will come.
I got you.
And on the elementary side, we have to be at 22 to 1, so there's no-
So, so you're saying we have the fixed cost of 100% staffing, but a variable revenue-
Absolutely.
Of who's there.
That, and that's the issue, and so-
We're tying a variable to a fixed, and that's kind of this-
And the, the, the challenge has been, as you can see on this chart, although it's variable, pre-COVID, it was pretty steady. Like, we sorta knew 94 right in there. So we knew that we could budget at 94 and we would be pretty safe, and it was steady. And so as I've had conversations, like, I, I talked to, um, Will Metcalf, and he said, well, did, you know, did you have this concern la, you know, when we were going through the budgeting process? Well, no, because pre-COVID, this really wasn't a concern. We, we, we knew 94% would work in our budget, but post-COVID, we don't know that 94% is ever happening again. And with all the variability, it can just be a problem. So that's, that's why we feel different about it today than we did two years ago. Because, you know, for many years, we just knew.
Yeah, modeling and forecasting, when you had that stable 94, you could-
You, you knew it, yeah.
But now the, the environment's such that, who knows?
Crazy, indeed.
Okay.
Yeah, and then all of a sudden, like, just two, like we said, just two, being two points off, costs you $8 million. That's a big deal, you know? We get to the end of the budget year and we're looking at each other and having to pull $8 million out of the fund balance just to make, make the budget. That's not, that's not a place we want to be.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rice?
And, and we've really, do you have a question? You know, we've really been fortunate with, you know, s- stable 94% plus 15, we could count on those 1,500 kids, just, you know, just like clockwork, they were, they, they were coming. We've been very fortunate, and, and I've been talking to Frisco ISD. And, you know, they had exponential growth over the past 10 or so years, you know, 3,000-plus students. But now they're, they're still growing, but that growth is, is coming down to around where we are at 1,500, you know, a year, and they're struggling. You know, you know, I'll be having a conversation with them tomorrow just to help them through, you know, working with them on, on how to, you know, help them best I can, you know, is meet the needs now moving forward at, at such a lower rate. So one thing you're gonna notice in the funding formula is, and it's just like business, as Dr. Noel and I had this conversation, it's just like a business. If you're not growing, you're dying. If you, if you don't, if you don't have growth, you can't hire people, you, you definitely can't give raises. So it's, it's just like an industry. You, you can see it with school districts. If you're not growing, the funding formula does not really support you. So this is just a graphical representation of our 1,500 students a year we've had since 2013, 2014. You can see the blip that we had in 2021, uh, but then we rebounded this year with 3,100 new students. And you can see us 1,500 students again up to 69,187.
And our enrollment today, um, is 68,3, I think.
68,376.
So we, you know, Darren bases his enrollments off of, off of Snapshot Day, which is in October, but we just have continued to grow throughout the year.
So I know y'all seen this chart a lot, uh, but I think it is very important. This is the greater Houston area tax rates. You can see Conroe ISD there in red at a dollar 17.6. We're the third lowest in the greater Houston area. The school district's in the dark blue, that is our local Montgomery County school districts. The light green, those are our peer districts that we compare to, not only academically, but also financially. And then the other, uh, light blue districts are the other greater Houston area school districts. So we're in good standing with our, with our tax rate.
I'm curious, Mr. Rice, when you look at these tax rates, how many of these school districts are no longer growing in comparison to us?
That, that is a good question. I, I do not have the answer, but I, I can definitely get that for you for next time. That's a good question.
I mean, when you look, just like knowing the ones that are growing quickly, you know, your Katy is growing very quickly. Cyfair continues to grow.
Klein.
Klein is really kind of leveling off, they're, they're kind of built out. Fort Bend continues to grow. Looking at Spring Branch does not grow at a rate like us, I'm looking at our, at our comp district. Humble does not grow significantly, uh, either. So overall, I would say, when you, you look at like who's really grown quickly, um, and had to have big bonds to support that.
Right, that's kind of what I'm, kind of what I'm getting at.
Tom Ball, Willis.
Yeah, Tom Ball, Cyfair, Katy, um, New Caney, and you, like, New Caney, Sheldon has grown really fast and you can see what it's done to their tax rate. But, so the fact that we've been able to manage it has been really significant and not allow it to, you know, balloon at any, at any moment has been a big deal for us. You know, that's, that, that's a key. But it, like Darren said, it's, there's, there's two challenges. One is if you're not growing, you're in bad shape. Two, if you're growing, you have a challenge of you have to continue to build schools, you have to continue on that bond indebtedness side. So there's, it's give and take, right? It's, it's, it's one way or the other, so.
And every penny in tax rate represents approximately?
Four million.
Four million.
What I was thinking.
Now, the, the key-
I just wanted to verify.
Be about 4.5 million dollars next year.
And the, the key to remember, um, Mr. Sanders, on our M and O tax rate, which, I know you all know this, but just for the sake of anybody that may be watching, two sides to our tax rate, maintenance and operation, bond indebtedness. The bond indebtedness, we owe what we owe, that, that tax rate is set by the state, right? So it, it is, the amount of money we owe, whatever tax rate is required to fund that, it's done. And you have the M and O side, but once again, now the state plays a role in that. But you have to remember that those last pennies are golden, right? So if you, if you reduce, let's say, on the M and O side, you, you reduce the tax rate by a penny, you don't only reduce the $4 million that it produces locally, we would lose how much in state funding?
Four million.
An additional four million in state funding. So one penny is actually $8 million because they, they make you take off a golden penny. It's, it's interesting, the way the state sets up the funding formula, it is to encourage local school boards to increase the local M and O tax rate. Although that's not what's always spoken, when you give golden pennies, that, that's what it is. It's an incentive to you, and you, and you will see, then we, as we look at some of these other districts that spend a lot more money per student to educate, they're accessing more of those golden pennies. So they're, they're getting, they're generating much more state funding than we are per child.
Which is interesting to note, if you take the highest tax rate and where we are, there's a 30 and a half cent difference.
Yeah.
So calculating 30 and a half cents times 4 million is 122 million dollars more that they're getting than we're getting.
We can do a lot with that.
Every year, yes.
You can do a lot with that, but also, to me, that says we are extremely efficient compared to another high-growth, uh, district out there. It's getting another 122 million dollars more than we are.
And I think y'all would be proud that we do have other districts that call us and look for guidance, uh, not, not only on the finance side, but on our TNL side, HR side. You know, we do have that communication, they go, what are y'all doing? What are those efficiencies? Help us get there. And so, uh, and I, and I know-
And that's what-
Dr. Noel has those conversations often.
Yeah, that's what people can't believe is, and you know, you see it because we showed, like, last month, we showed you the comparison academically and of all these districts that are in the green. And we, you know, we typically come in that second place slot behind Katy. You can see our tax rate's well behind Katy. So then there is a value discussion, right? Or would we be willing to add, you know, 14, 15 cents to our tax rate to get to that performance? I, I don't know if that's the right move for our community, but that would add, you know, $90 million to our budget annually, like, like Mr. Wagner said, every year. And, and yet we still perform at that level. So when you look, you know, all these other districts in the green that are taxing at a much higher level than us, but not performing at the same level academically than us, those are the people that called Darren and called me and called Dr. Hines and say, how? What, tell us what you're doing because we need to try to figure that out. The answer here is pretty simple. We, we employ amazing people. I mean, that's, that's, that's the bottom line. From everybody in this room through everybody that works on our campuses, that's how it happens. It's just amazing people getting the job done. So we are fortunate in that regard.
So to continue on the, uh, property value, uh, train, we're looking here, this, this year, we're using 5% um, for our, our change in certified values. Now, that 5% is taking into account the $15,000 additional homestead exemption. So if we look at that, that would be closer to 7%. So that'll increase us by about $2.1 billion, bringing our certified value, uh, to $45.3 billion. And I, and I have the little note to the side, although we have this increase in value, that is no net new revenue for the dental fund. However, this is the primary source of funding in our debt service, so I think that's very important.
I, let's say that again, though, just for, for clarity's sake. Although the tax, individual homeowners may see an increase in their school district taxes, so like, the last year, they paid 2,000 to us, this year, they may pay 2,200 to us. What that means is the state's going to decrease their funding to us by that exact amount. So in the end, we don't see that benefit, the benefit actually goes to the state. That's hard for homeowners always to understand because they just see their tax bill and they see, well, the school district's getting more money, what are they doing with all this extra money? That's, we're not funded like a county government or a city government. That's not how it works for us. So we, we actually see that decrease from the state side. So, um, and that, that is confusing for people because they're like, no, you're getting more, I'm paying you more, but, but we're really not because we're losing on the state side. And our, I don't know, Karen, do you know the percentage of amount, the, the state funding, like, over the last 10 years, how it has changed?
Yeah, so it's, it's almost 70, 30 right now.
Now it's up to 70, 30.
And what was it 10 years ago, I'd rather guess? Probably-
Probably 60, 40.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Closer, almo- almost a 50, 50.
Yeah.
I mean- So, you know, with the tax, uh, tax value increase, um, we all know with House Bill Three, there was tax compression built in. So our projected tax rate, um, for next year with 5% growth will be a dollar 15, 53. That is staying consistent on the debt service side at 26 cents and our M and O tax rate at 89.53 cents. So as I said, non-legislative year, we think we have a pretty good framework. You know, working with our estimates that we have in here, um, we'll just kind of walk down it. And this is where we're gonna start wanting to get some of y'all's input because I just have really placeholders where we've traditionally been. On the revenue side, our beginning revenue was 586.12 million. Um, our estimated revenue change, looking at our local revenue, which is limited to 2 and 1/2% because of House Bill Three, uh, 10.37 million. And as we see here, the state funding decreased due to House Bill Three and the Robin Hood effect, they take right off the top, as Dr. Noel just alluded to, 10.37 million. So net zero increase to our revenue, uh, from increased appraised value. State funding, uh, with our student growth, 23.74 million dollar increase. First year, you've seen the teacher incentive allotment, we're, we're estimating about 1.5 million dollar revenue. There will be a corresponding, uh, expenditure for that, but, but the first year, we're gonna see that. TRS in-kind funds, we know that's the accounting entry we're required to do, 1.75 million for total revenue increase of 26.99 million. Bring our estimated total revenue to 613.11 million. Looking at the expenditure side of the budget, our begin, beginning expenditures, 596.12 million. Our estimated expenditure increase, a salary increase, uh, looking at last year, 3 and 1/2% raise generally costs about 12 and 1/2 million dollars for the district. And we will have a further discussion on that on a separate slide. Additional personnel for growth, uh, for 2022, 2023 with our new students, we're estimating at about $10 million. The offset to the teacher incentive allotment on the revenue side, 1.5 million dollars. We're backing- Sir.
What's the 2,900?
Well, 2,900 is, is from where we were at budget last year at 66,298 versus where we ended up at Snapshot. So, so it, it, it's just, it's just a difference. So we're actually real, because we did the budget based off of 66,298, but we're realizing actually 2,900 student growth over where we're gonna do budget this year just because we grew that much between, you know, based on budget.
From the budget plus 1,500.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Correct. So our total esti- uh, estimated expenditure increase is 16.99 million. So our estimated total expenditure is 613.11 million dollars. And basically, to begin with, you know, we're, we're here, we have a, a balanced budget at, at this point. But this is just a framework, very early in our estimates, but, but we do think, you know, we have a, a pretty good feel of where we are. And, you know, a non-legislative year, we feel pretty confident that, that we can meet these minimums here.
Is that 10 million retention stipend what we did this year or something?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Basically, 12.5 is 3%?
That's about 3 and 1/2%, 3 to 3 and 1/2%, yeah.
And then also looking forward to '24, '25 fiscal year because of the way the funding formula works. If there is no change in the formula, we will be at a deficit next year of around 11.
Right.
And then in the following year, '22, it's just gonna compound because there is no mechanism to give a raise anymore. It's, the only growth we get is from students to higher additional personnel. So, you know, given there, if there is no change in the formula, we could be looking at-
When I look at the retention stipend, it shows it as a negative expenditure.
Yeah, we're, we're backing it out. Last year, it was part of the budget, and, and, and this year, we're, we're, we're backing it out, getting us back to, uh, a, a balanced budget. And then when we look at our fund balance that I'm fixing to show you, where we are in fund balance, uh, you know, we would, we would see the board to see if they wanted to use fund balance to fund a potential retention stipend for next year. If, if, if we're looking good in the budget next year, y'all could come back and say, hey, we want to use some of this fund balance to, to, to pay for that. So, so that's kind of where that's trending.
Yeah, there's two, two, uh, kind of separate salary conversations that we're looking at to get feedback on. One would be that retention stipend, but we don't have to build it into the budget. We just can build it into the pay plan that there could be a retention stipend. And as Mr. Rice mentioned, we might get to October of next year and say, hey, the budget's good, fund balance is healthy. We want to take some of that and do a retention stipend at that point. But the other piece is that 12.5 million, where in the last few years, we've, we've divvied that up pretty evenly, right? 3.5% across the board. Part of the question that we have now is, is that still the right way to look at it? Or do we need to be thinking along the lines of like our lowest earners, our hourly employees? Do we need to be looking at them getting 7, 8% and moving everybody else to 2.75 or 3? Two point seven-five or three, you know, whatever the balance, the the challenge we have is the.
We've had.
The piece of the pie is the piece of the pie. It's twelve point five million. It's just how do we want to structure it? And, you know, part of that will be the conversation we have with Tasby, you know, based on your guidance, we'll tell Tasby, show us. These different scenarios, we would bring those back to you and and you could, you know, then make your final choice, but.
I like that approach, too. I mean, just flow an error. But go ahead.
Yeah. Go go ahead, Ms. Rice.
Okay, so so as Dr. Noel was was just talking about, his conversation we'd like to have on on the compensation plan, as we said, three and a half percent raise. Costs roughly twelve and a half million dollars. And and, you know, we're thinking, do we need to reevaluate how we distribute the raise? Last year, it was three and a half percent district wide. Bus drivers got a, got a little larger increase. So do we need to relook at how we do teacher and professional staff raises? Do we need to change focus on our, to our hourly employees and align the wages with the industry competing for that same portion of the workforce? And those are the ones that are suffering the most from this inflation that we're seeing hit now. I know everybody's gone to the grocery store and you used to go in for a hundred dollars. Now it's. Two hundred dollar grocery cart.
If you can find what you want, right?
Yes, correct. And then and then we we would like to get, you know, from the board, just some some scenario recommendations that y'all would like to see that we could take to Tasby. And 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 bring that to them so that at the April Board Workshop, when when Tasby comes and presents to y'all, they could, they could bring meaningful information to y'all that 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 y'all could delineate from that.
And I I would make a note too, just to remind you all that the retention stipends, we've done fifteen hundred dollars this year. And we've chosen historically, now that we've done it a few years, I could say historically, we give flat, a flat amount to all employees, which so then by percentage, it really benefits. Those hourly employees. And that's, that's why we think that's important to do it that way. Rather than say, everybody gets one percent, which benefits our higher earners more. Giving that flat rate benefits, you know, everyone. And so that's, you know, but but right now, that's not in the budget. But we we could add it later, certainly. But that's, you know, as we just look, look at this, that's what we're thinking about.
What does the teacher allotment also do? I know it's a, it's a pass through to us from the state, but that's, that's additional money.
We have the teacher allotment expert.
That's additional monies, as I understand it, that teachers did it depending on where they, and I know Dr. Hines and I have had multiple discussions about teacher allotment.
We've got two experts here on either side.
We have about two hundred and forty-five teachers that are eligible and participating this year. So that that's where our estimate of one point five million, we won't know until the end of the school year actually what the results are. But we are required to spend ninety percent of that funding from the state on compensation for those rewarded teachers. So. And then ten percent, we can spend locally on administering the plan. So, you know, the the whole idea behind it is rewarding teachers for.
Absolutely. And I agree with that. I I think that's a great idea that they came up with, but. So do they get that plus? Plus exactly the same? That's what I guess we're having the discussion about, right?
It just depends on on the campus they're at. So there's a, there's an allotment amount based on every location, based on economically disadvantaged student counts and geocoding and. So those those allotments are already determined for this year. And so they know if they're at Anderson, they're getting X, if they're a master teacher, an exemplary or recognized, so.
So so their raise would be based off of the salary they earn from us.
Correct.
Then the allotment would come on top of that.
That's what I was trying to.
Yes, yes.
But it's a small, like we said, it's only two hundred and forty-five of our eighty-five hundred employees.
They really don't receive it for a whole nother year later.
Right.
Right.
Oh.
There's a, there's a whole delay in the reporting process.
This is our measurement year. Next year will be the year they're actually awarded the designation and then they'll receive actual cash in hand, summer of twenty-three. So.
Mr. Rice, I personally, I'd like to see a seventy, thirty split.
Okay.
Of that three point five.
Okay, seventy to?
The hourly, kind of the lower. And a thirty to the teacher professional staff.
Okay, a part of that I would, I would highlight is the numbers of employees in each of those buckets. So it's not, it's not equal number. So of of the employees, you know, forty-five hundred are teachers, more than half are teachers. And then of the, of what's left, do we know the, how many are in the hourly pay plan?
Yeah, I think it's about seventy, thirty.
Yeah, so the the number of employees in the, in the hourly is much smaller. So that, now the benefit there is, so let's say if you, if you said, do. Seven percent for them or or.
Okay.
You you see what I'm saying? If you said to do seven or eight percent for that group, it may only lower the amount of money that's that's still available for teachers down to. Two point, I'm guessing here, I'm like, two point eight seven five. Like it wouldn't, you know, just because you go up four percentage points on that side, you're not going to lower this one by that much. Just based on the numbers of of people in the, in the pool.
Understand.
Ms. Herman?
I think also going back to what you're saying, as far as watching it now, I'm looking here at the segment of the workforce of the hourly. Have, it's got to have some kind of also sense of what is those options for those folks? You know, rather than going to, you know, I would like to see the seventy, thirty, but if our teachers, if that thirty doesn't get them, or this company down the road. Hires them away, it should be a function of what's the market paying them, not a function.
That's what I was going to say. My experience working with Tasby in our district was they bring us and say, okay, this group of employees are at or below the midpoint in the salary range.
We should drive it.
And that that really should be the drivers is if our nurses, and I'm just picking one.
Sure, yeah.
They're below market.
Police officers, police.
Given the healthcare industry, then, you know, it seems like in order to keep the best quality nurses, we may have to pay them more than we do.
Yeah, you almost have to pick it out like a, by by job description and one of our.
Job grade, yeah.
One of the challenges that we've had to push Tasby on last year, we kind of made this adjustment, was they, they will always. Do that, that market comparison, but they always do the market comparison to other school districts. Well, what they were doing was missing out on the industry because if I'm in child nutrition and I'm making eleven fifty an hour. And and twelve dollars, right? Now it's twelve dollars, but before, but so if I'm making twelve dollars, but if. Local restaurant is advertising at fourteen fifty starting pay, that's the market. It doesn't.
Well, yeah, that segment of that.
It really doesn't matter what, you know, New Caney I S D child nutrition's paying. It matters what.
I agree.
The restaurant right next door to us.
It's apples or oranges when you're dealing professionally.
Correct.
Have to be teachers unless they chose to go and get out of profession.
Right.
And so we're more at risk for those folks that we're we're speaking of now. Changing, jumping shop, jumping ship and going to Taco Bell, Chick-fil-A or Target or whatever. For much, much more competitive pay.
Well, unless we're offering some other incentive, like childcare for the nutrition, you know, if somebody's working in nutrition. And they're able to bring their kids to the littles that's at their campus while they're working it, you know, then there's a benefit there. They're not paying for childcare. While they're working in the cafeteria.
And and we don't have, I mean, certainly all of those are incentive things that we can look at, that we've, that we don't have, that other districts do in places. Like for transportation, bus drivers, they have daycares at their, at their transportation centers for bus drivers. That, those are all. Extra benefits. Now, one of the things that's great is we all understand T R S is great. It's wonderful, but. It's not pay the bill money next week, you know, and so when you're young and when you're just in a, a young family situation, you're just trying to pay today's bills. It's hard to realize that, oh, T R S is really great and all that. No, you need, you know, fourteen fifty an hour is just better than twelve an hour. I gotta go.
I mean, I like benefits. Great. Love that. For ultimate cash is the way.
That you're, I mean, pay the bill money, yeah.
Yeah. Ms. Chase has three kids and she can take advantage of it. I don't have any kids. Ms. Chase is taking advantage of all that benefit where she's kind of, you know, at my expense, if you will. So you mean cash, her cash, she can get her own childcare and I use my own, my purposes. It's always more of a better approach for me. But not knocking the benefits.
Right.
Well, I would say when we, when we engaged Tasby for that salary survey, we need them to go out into the market.
Okay.
Because that's got to be. I I remember several years ago, we had this discussion about having to pay janitorial staff more because they were leaving us and going to work. At a fast food restaurant and making two or three dollars more an hour. And I I, we've got to be in the market. I mean, we want our schools clean and we want our kids safe. And so we've got to do what we've got to do to do that. And we've got to figure that part out.
Yeah.
Me, I I want to give everybody as much as we can, but also we have to be good stewards of what we have. And what we have is what we have. And so we've got to decide from the pie, who gets what.
And so I just want to make sure I, that I'm hearing what you're telling me. You're, you all are are willing and would like us to be aggressive on that hourly side to the, the real market. And if that means we're giving seven or, I just say seven, like if we're giving seven percent to to that. To to those positions and that ends up pushing us to three percent at other positions, we would be comfortable with that. At least you want to see those options.
I do.
Okay, yes, Ms. Herman.
I'm sure somewhere we have an estimated turnover of that group. Is there, and I know this is asking crazy stuff. Now, is there any, is there any way to get an estimate of that industry turnover compared to other districts of our hourly people? I mean, I don't, I have no idea if we're competitive or not. When I hear bus drivers that I know work for Conroy, they say, well, now I'm doing this. I I know our district loses because I have people that say, yeah, I used to be a bus driver. What are you? Hey, they're hiring bus drivers. Well, I don't do that. Now I'm working over at Joe's Truck Service or something, you know, so you know we're, but the cost of the training them. And getting that bus driver that knows the route, knows the kids, there's a value in that that's hard to put a dollar on. Versus, okay, you get a bus driver a day, next Monday, you got a brand new bus driver. A month later, you get a brand new one again.
Right.
There's some gross efficiencies there.
We should definitely be able to to analyze turnover rate over like the last couple of years and see how that, how that's played out.
And even if it is a seventy percent that Mr. Williams mentioned, that may sound like a big jump, but it may be we find out in six months, hey. I'd really give someone eleven and keep them, then ten fifty and have them leave every week.
No doubt, absolutely.
But but I think it, I think it extends beyond just our auxiliary departments. I think we're looking at the hourly employees that are on our campuses.
Yes.
We're struggling to keep them, you know, you know.
Structural aids and.
I think we're talking about hourly across the board.
Yes.
Across the board. And 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 for the first time in in that I can remember, we've, we're actually struggling on the, on the child nutrition workers, you know, usually. You know, we're, we're pretty steady, but but we've been up to fifty employees short on a given, on a given date. Now, a lot of that, some of that has to do with COVID, but. But we've actually got to the point where even though we've raised them, they were at ten oh five. They got to raise it twelve dollars. Y'all, y'all, y'all approved that mid-year raise. It's still, it it's still below. The incentive to get them, you know, to come sign up and come to workforce. So we need, we definitely.
I think part of that point is there's, we know there are perks to working for the school district. It's nice to be off when your kids are off. It's like, all those things are great, but in the end.
You got to feed your family.
Yeah, I have to pay my bills.
Benefits are great, but bank don't teach them.
Right. Okay, so we'll, we'll ask Tasby to give us some.
It's a competitive market right now, and that's the unfortunate reality.
And and I don't think we're coming back any, anytime soon.
I don't either.
Okay, well, that's a good direction. Thank you all very much. Just me?
Mr. Rice, can you remind me about the vacation days? So this year, we added those days, were those permanent?
Yes.
And then?
Yes, we added three additional local days.
Right.
To our employees and that that is permanent. The board made that that permanent this year. So that is permanent moving forward.
And that's permanent for next, you know, moving forward.
Starting this year.
And also, and so then for this budget, we've, that's for next year as well. So that's.
Yes, ma'am. That is, yeah, moving forward, yes.
So all employees receive five days from the state, and now they've received five local days. So they have ten days of leave per year. They can, they've always been able to bank the state days. Always, those always roll over for you. And now we've added the opportunity for them to bank their local days, which is new for us as well. So that's one more way that they can.
They can bank or get paid.
They can bank or be paid, correct. They still have that option, but they can bank them, which the banking part is what's new for us. We've never allowed that previously.
Now, has the state made any indication as to whether or not they're going to be changing that with, I mean, I know that they're not paying anymore on the ten days due to COVID.
Right, yeah.
They looking to add any more days on the state side?
No, I haven't heard any conversation at all about that. I think it's been five for as long as I've been in education, I think.
Yeah.
Which is kind of odd because there, there was a point where we added more school days and I don't think they added more.
More off duty.
More off duty days when they did that. I think they left their five, so.
Well, and the only reason I ask is, you know, just because this is obviously something that we're going to be living with. And, you know, when a teacher is out with multiple children out, and if we're going to continue to keep. The quarantine time, that teacher's going to have to be out with her kids. And then, of course, you know, we get into the whole docking of the check situation and there you go, end of the month, and our check is what it is. And like, like everyone has said, the bills are still what the bills are. And so I was just curious to know if the state has said anything. I mean, I know that our pie is what our pie.
COVID related, I haven't, I haven't heard anything about them offering to pay for any additional days off or or pay employees while they're off for COVID. And 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 we haven't instituted that policy either.
And the nice thing for us for this year and for next year is that we're sort of doing double for our employees. So remember that we added the three days. Because we were going to eventually, we're, we're going to come off the extended sick leave, which is the half-doc situation. But that won't occur until after next year. So really for these next, for this year, because we already added the three days, and then for next year, they'll get five, plus still have extended sick leave. The timing is nice that we kind of have a double parachute there for our staff that.
Right. That no other district has.
Nobody has that extended sick leave. We're like the only people.
Right.
Just while we need it to go away at some point, but it's nice that it's here now. Like it really is that it is good.
Yes.
What was our compensation increase for this year's budget?
Three and a half percent.
Three and a half percent.
And then bus drivers have got five percent. Minimum starting pay of eighteen dollars.
Which equated to still like twelve and a half million?
Yes, ma'am.
And then we also did the fifteen hundred in retention stipends throughout the year. So on top of that raise.
Yeah, and that, that was ten million dollars. So that's another three percent, you know, if you looked at it like that. Okay, is that enough of that? Okay. Just looking at, you know, budget permitting, some possible changes that we're looking at for our current staffing formulas. At the pre-K level, we're currently at twenty-two to one. We're looking at moving that to eighteen to one, and that is at an estimated cost of one point three million dollars. For our intermediate levels, grade five and six, we're currently at twenty-six to one. We're looking to move that to twenty-five to one at a possible estimated cost of six hundred thousand. And and that's, that's one of the, the areas.
We can speak to that a little bit. Just academically speaking, fifth and sixth grade, that's an area that we are. Our class sizes are significantly larger than our, our comparable districts. So that, making that move makes that change. And then. Pre-K, how many teachers have we added during the school year this year?
I have that in the slot, a lot.
A lot, yeah.
Like twenty, twenty-four.
So part of changing these formulas, what it does is it allows, it just generates vacancies at the beginning of the year. So that principals can hire in, during the hiring season versus. We're too tight at the beginning of the year, then we add so many teachers throughout the year, and then they either can't find them or they're not, you know, the, the pool is. Much more shallow when we're adding a position three weeks into the school year versus having it already be there early. So that's the.
Pre-K traditionally grows during the year.
Yeah.
So that's one of the things about if we start with eighteen, one, we'll get to twenty-two, which is, you know, it just takes a few months.
And these twenty-four pre-K teachers that were added were driven by just the three thousand extra.
I have a little bit of information about pre-K when I do.
Who are you going to talk about the expanding? Yeah, pre-K. Okay. Okay, just to, just to touch quickly on our fund balance. So we're in very good shape with our fund balance. As you know, our goal is to maintain. An unassigned fund balance of twenty to twenty-five percent of the budget. Our current twenty-one, twenty-two budget's five hundred and ninety-six million dollars. Our current unassigned fund balance is a he- one hundred and seventy-one point four million. Our target at twenty-five percent is a hundred and forty-nine million. Showing us available of twenty-two point four million dollars. And and that is where I was talking about earlier, we could use some of these monies. We could continue the program of 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 putting money into our capital maintenance fund. Or you could use this for retention stipends moving forward. Those one-time expenditures are a good use to bring that money down, you know, back to our twenty-five percent range.
And then there's, you know, there's the constant conversation we have about land. You know, that's a, certainly that's a, a very valuable use of fund balance as well. One-time purchase that we know we would utilize in the future. So we've. Chris will, you know, show us some, some scenarios about growth here in a little while, too, but that's another consideration we would have you make on that, that money. I'm sorry.
How much is in the capital maintenance?
How much is in our capital maintenance fund? We're sixty million dollars? Now, there's sixty million, now, that's how much total of that the board has put in there. We have spent, you know, some, some of those funds on the projects that it was intended to. Fifty million of that was. Fifty million of that was to support the two thousand and nineteen bond referendum, which was for land purchases, technology, and other building projects. Right. So fifty million of it, you know, is, is earmarked for projects. There's ten million dollars in there that is, that is available for, for separate projects that we want to do. So just kind of what's next in the, in the, in the budget program. We need to finalize our revenues. Working on our estimates for state funding, funding, monitoring our average daily attendance, working with the appraisal district on our local assessed values. Finalizing expenditures, number one, Dr. Hines is working with his staff on the additional personnel at the campus levels. Once again, we'll bring you the Tazby compensation recommendations at the April Board Workshop. Just now beginning the campus and departmental expenditure needs. We'll be working with each one of those departments individually through their budget process. Future board meetings, public hearings, and budget approval, April fifth, Board Workshop. We have planned, we're going to bring to y'all the raises with Tazby's compensation study. We will then bring our budget plan, I mean, our, our benefits plan and everything to y'all at, at that board workshop to, to bring that to y'all and then give you another budget update. June seventh, we have a board workshop scheduled, but this is a non-legislative year, only if it is needed, only if we see that our estimates are, are, are changing dramatically, will we have to come back to the board for that. July thirteenth, we have the district-level planning and decision-making committee. We'll present the budget to them and bring a recommendation to the board at the July nineteenth board meeting. And then at that board meeting, y'all can make final tweaks or, or adjustments to the budget that y'all would like. August second will be our fir- first public hearing. Then August sixteenth, we'll have a public hearing at the board meeting, and then at that board meeting, we will ask y'all to adopt the budget and the tax rate.
Any questions on that? Anybody like a quick break before we move to the last presentation?
Let me get a tea, yeah.
Just take a five minute, and then we'll come back. All right, welcome back, everybody. We will now move to item five, receive overview of student enrollment, growth, and capacity with Dr. Hines.
Yes, sir. Members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Noel, we're going to just kind of give you a, really provide a brief overview of our enrollment and capacities and where we're at at this time. And, you know, and those are always moving targets. It's interesting, saw this yesterday, the top three things Texans believe schools accountability rating should be based on, and this is in addition to student learning, is one, whether or not students feel safe, supported, and engaged at school. Teacher quality and access to fine arts, foreign language instruction, athletics, and other enrichment programs. And so that was kind of interesting to hear, because really when we talk about space and we talk about our buildings, we're also talking about engagement. And space can shape how we interact with our students and help shape their educational experiences, influence how and when and if professional staff engage with one another and can contribute to job satisfaction for our staff. Space also can impact classroom management. It does require maintenance and, and it does cost money to operate and staff. The way we use space continues to change. This is my thirty-ninth year, and, you know, it's been amazing to watch the changes over the years in terms of technology, what we do with presentations, what we do with so many things. Furniture has changed. And we do value yesterday, but we live in today, and it, it just keeps changing. The district, knowing that, our district is currently in the process. EZ Foster and his team have started really developing a set of educational specifications that will guide us in future facility planning. It's really been a worthwhile exercise, and it's been really a, a year-long process. We're not done, but it's been really good to really sit down and kind of really look at, what do we believe and, and what are the kind of things that we can put into our buildings going forward? So really want to talk a little about growth and where we are. As Darren Rice shared, you know, really we've, we've seen about three thousand student growth this year. So between two thousand and eighteen and nineteen, and nineteen, twenty school years, we grew by nineteen hundred students, just to kind of give you a pre-COVID look. And then during the two thousand and twenty-one year, we anticipated enrollment of sixty-six thousand students. On September sixteenth of two thousand and twenty, we were sitting at sixty-four thousand two hundred and ninety-one and just saying, where is everybody? Right? So we were having to make some adjustments. This was last year, but students started coming back. And on January twenty-fifth of last year, our enrollment was sixty-five thousand one hundred and seventeen. We finished the year with an enrollment of sixty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-eight, so we continued to add students through the end of the year. This year, on September the sixteenth, our enrollment was sixty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-five. And on January twenty-first, and it's gone up three hundred since then, we were at sixty-eight thousand. And it is highly likely that we will pass seventy-five thousand students in the next five years, and we need to start planning for that. So the good news is we are growing. The challenge is we have to find room for everyone. And, you know, we have rezoned, and we've opened several campuses since our last demographic study in two thousand and eighteen as part of our last bond issue. So a lot of our projections are no longer current. We have to go back and redo them, and so it is time for us to engage in a new demographic study because we need to get our numbers updated, because we've done so much moving around and changing. We really need to come back and, and really look at our planning units. We've also divided several areas into smaller planning segments as communities have come in. We've been able to kind of define and refine those areas. Now, because of infrastructure, traffic, the programs that we offer, parking, a building generally, generally has been my experience, it feels very full around ninety percent and above. So when you hit ninety percent, people can't tell, it feels like a hundred percent. I mean, it's, it's full. And currently, just to put this in perspective, our district facilities, district-wide, we are at ninety-seven percent capacity. And now programs can impact efficiencies, you know, make, and I'll give an example of that. We have several, several special education programs. We have a regional deaf ed school at Hauser, and it takes, you know, like four classrooms, but we don't serve a lot of students in that program. We have some autism programs that we might use two or three rooms, and we might serve just a handful of students. So we have just added programs over the year. When we have bilingual programs at our school, it, it changes the way the efficiencies of our enrollments balance. So instead of dividing all those second graders by eight teachers, we're dividing them by four times two. And so we get a little less efficient, and so we need a few more rooms when we do that. And so those are things that we've learned over time, is that capacities fluctuate. Change with programs, change with what, who the students were serving. Now, with the exception of portable buildings, our buildings are, are fixed. And when we operate at the level of capacities that we are currently operating at, we have very little cushion in our capacities. We either have to redraw the boundaries almost annually or rely on portable classrooms. And we all know there's a pain threshold associated with just continuously rezoning families. It also gets complicated when we're trying to keep people in the same feeder pattern, because sometimes where we have space, it's across the district, and do we really want to disrupt families' travel? We currently utilize in our district for classrooms, two hundred and three portable classroom buildings, which, just to put that in perspective, is about a capacity of forty-four hundred students. So we are portable-dependent.
So just speaking to that, and, and I know you, they're spread out everywhere, so you can, not just buildings, but that's, that's like four flex schools, like that's.
Four, four elementary schools, four, four buildings.
Of portables. How many campuses do those two hundred and three sit on?
I will show a little bit of a summary here coming up. In fact, I'll give you a rundown.
And the ninety-seven percent capacity is including the utilized portables.
Yes. So as we look at the high schools, it's just a breakdown of our high schools, and we did break it out by ninth-grade campus as well. And you can kind of get us, get a feel for where we have some room. We have a little bit of room in Oak Ridge High School. Ironically, it's under construction right now, so even all that space is not really available. And so we didn't go back and remove it, but you can kind of get a feel. I've highlighted the areas. Grand Oaks is projected, and this was, this is interesting, Passe projected in two thousand and twenty-eight that Grand Oaks High School would be at thirty-six eighty-eight. I think we're projecting next year they'll be at thirty-seven hundred, so they are already past the two thousand and twenty-eight projection. And we've found through experience over the years that sometimes schools hit it three years ahead of time or four years ahead of time, and sometimes they hit it three years later or four years later. It just varies from community and, and what's going on in the economy.
The Oak Ridge ninth-grade campus, why, why do they have portables?
So I was mentioning, Oak Ridge High School is undergoing a large construction project, so we're actually displacing some of the high school students to portables at that campus. So that's, you know, Oak Ridge, and that's the, the misnomer about Oak Ridge. It, it looks like it's empty. It's really not. That's why we have to have portables.
Dr. Hines, we just built a brand-new wing at the Woodlands High School.
Yes.
Just opened, right?
Just opened a wing at the Woodlands and a wing at College Park.
And so that capacity of a hundred and three percent still is.
That's what the new capacity is.
That brand-new capacity.
Yes, so we've added two, we've added two hundred student capacities to College Park and the Woodlands on this chart. And you can see they're both still over capacity. We did, we did manage to get the portables all off of the College Park campus. We have removed a few from the Woodlands High School, but we still have twelve there.
And sometimes the portable conversation, the age of some of our portables are such that moving them is really not an option. Like, they just, you know, you're better off to leave them where they are, and they may serve some auxiliary-type purpose of storage or whatever, even if they're not utilized as a classroom.
So just gives you kind of an idea where we are with the high schools. And Candy Creek, which currently has some room, but they're, they're expected to have some rapid growth out there. And then I will point out Conroe High School, obviously, you know, we're, we're out of room, we're projected at sixty-seven, sixty-five. Part of the problem too is what's coming through the ninth grade. So, you know, we just added on, and this, this capacity reflects the addition to the ninth-grade campus of Conroe High School, which won't open until the fall, but I went ahead and put it into the capacity just to kind of show you, but it won't be long before. We have five portables there now. We're not going to take them away when we open the new wing. We'll need them soon enough. So it's just one of those realities of the ninth, the Conroe feeder is growing super fast. So we did add two hundred-seat capacity to Woodlands High School and College Park this year. In two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three, we will increase Conroe High School ninth grade by two hundred seats. We do currently use twenty-nine portable classrooms at the high school level. Conroe High, Grand Oaks, and Candy Creek High Schools, I'll mention, when the construction is finished in two thousand and twenty-five, Conroe High School will add about nine hundred-seat capacity to the main campus. It is projected to be near fifty-one hundred when you combine the two campuses, ninth through twelve, next year. And they're projected to have an enrollment of close to seven thousand by two thousand and twenty-eight. And, and then if I had to put a, you know, a number one priority on our needs out there, I would say we need a plan for the Conroe, new Conroe High School. And it has certainly risen to the top. Grand Oaks is projected to be almost thirty-six hundred and fifty students next year with a capacity of thirty-two hundred. And, and that'll be our next target that we really need to focus on. Candy Creek High School, which currently is at eighty percent capacity, is projected to be at a hundred and twenty-five percent capacity by two thousand and twenty-eight. I'm not sure we'll make that, but if we don't make it in twenty-eight, it'll probably be about thirty, but we'll be there. So we'll have to start thinking about Candy Creek, certainly in the next eight years, ten years. With the nine hundred additional seats at Conroe High School, we will be at one hundred and three percent capacity by two thousand and twenty-eight. And depending on what we do at Conroe nine, we may need as many as three thousand seats by two thousand and twenty-eight just to meet our overall high school demand. So we know we need some space here in Conroe for high school.
So in talking about the, the possibility of a new Conroe High School, would that, would we be looking at alleviating some of the Woodland High School, Woodland College Park area?
I mean, we certainly could look at it. You know, right now, with, when you look at the projections, and it's always hard to tell. The Woodlands High School is projected to peak and then, and really kind of level down a little bit, so if it shrinks down two or three percent, it's fine. And so it's, there's really not a, a lot of new development that's outweighing the aging population, so it's balancing out pretty nice. College Park's had some pretty rapid growth the last few years, and a lot of that's just really reflected in the density of the, of the forty-five corridor and the fourteen-eight corridor and the two forty-two corridor. So it's been interesting to watch. You know, there hasn't really been a lot of development, but it's just been more density. So, you know, it's certainly something that we'll have to look at. I, I would just say our biggest need with the new high school in Conroe is to meet the needs of Conroe and maybe perhaps Candy Creek side. We, we always have a little bit of room at Oak Ridge, and Oak Ridge is filling up, and I'll show that when I get to the intermediates and elementaries. But Oak Ridge is also an area that's kind of increasing density right now, and so it's been interesting to watch. And so the short answer is, we're still going to be crowded even when we build a new high school. We're going to open it up, and we're going to still be crowded. And that's just the reality of it. Junior highs, a little bit even, even more crowded. We're at a hundred and two percent currently in our capacity at the junior highs. Of course, the most crowded junior high, Moorhead Junior High School in two thousand and twenty-three, so we won't get relief next year, but the year after, we're going to open the replacement junior high, and that's going to create an additional five hundred and fifty seats for Moorhead Junior High. So we'll be back inside the building for a couple of years, and then we'll outgrow that. But it is, you know, the good news is we do have some relief coming. Irons is holding pretty good at ninety percent and, but Stockton, you can see, we've just been open two years, and we're already at a hundred and two percent capacity. Pete Junior High, when we rezoned, we reduced quite a bit, but it's growing back, so we're at ninety-one percent capacity. We just added an addition to York Junior High. We just added five hundred seats and a little over five hundred seats. And we are at a hundred and three percent already. We are next year projecting an enrollment at two thousand and forty-one, and you can see the passive projection was two thousand and twenty, and so we're already past the two thousand and twenty-eight projection. So you can just see that junior high is an area too that we've, what's interesting, particularly, I think, in the Grand Oaks area, is we don't peak enrollment until seventh grade. So, which tells me, as the families that moved there tend to have older children.
I know you mentioned this, Chris, but you can just go back. Like, one of the things looking out into the future with the junior highs would be, if we build a new high school in Conroe, what do we do with the current Conroe High School ninth-grade campus? Like, if we could shrink Conroe High enough where it didn't need the ninth-grade campus anymore, that school originally was a junior high, it could revert back to a junior high. So that, when, and Chris kind of mentioned, depending on what we do with that in the future, it, it could be back in play as a junior high, which, you know, could then open Stockton up to pull some kids from Moorhead over to Stockton to kind of relieve it.
Didn't you have nine through twelve for both high schools?
You could, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. That's, that's all decisions to be made way down the road, but that is just something that we have out there as an idea. Could go back to a junior high.
So we're going to need the Conroe capacity in the future, just like we're going to need a solution kind of going into the York area. But, but as Dr. Noel mentioned, if we, if we can create some room in Conroe, it gives us, if we have some capacity at Stockton, we could bring students over from further east from Candy Creek feeder. So junior highs, we, we, we did add four hundred and seventy-five seats to York. It is currently at a hundred and three percent capacity. It is projected at enrollment next year over two thousand. We are currently at a hundred and two percent junior high capacity. We utilize thirty-seven portable classrooms. We will add an additional five hundred and fifty seats with the Moorhead Junior High replacement, so we do have a little bit of relief coming. With the scheduled additional seats by two thousand and twenty-eight, we are projected to be at a hundred and twelve percent of capacity, or roughly fourteen hundred seats. Or at least one large junior high school short, and the problem with just one is, you can see we're a very large district, so trying to spread everybody out over one without just doing massive rezoning all the time, we just don't, we just don't have a really good solution going forward.
And like, what percentage of these do you think would be, we would be able to just build onto the campus?
Well, and that's a really good question. It's something we look at. We've added on to, you know, Irons has a fixed amount of kind of core capacity, and really, we really don't want to add on there. And, and so when you start getting into the adding on, sometimes we could add on more classrooms, but the ability to serve it in terms of the parking and the traffic and all those other things that come into it, it just, it raises the question of whether that's the wisest thing to do. And so, you know, Moorhead Junior High, we've kind of plateaued, and we're kind of leveling off at about, not Moorhead, McCullough, at about a hundred and two percent right now. But it's been level. And, and that's another thing that's part of this, this whole projection and dealing with enrollments, is that we, we often have rapid increases followed by a decrease, then followed by an increase to level off again. And so we have to be willing to kind of weather those, those patterns.
We do, just in general, generally speaking, we build big schools to begin with. So, you know, like, we, we build a thousand-student elementary. A lot of districts will build six hundred, you know, so when you start thinking about adding on, to get twelve hundred intermediate kids in one place is a lot. You know, there's a lot of need, a lot of. You know, there's a lot of need, a lot of, so that we run in that struggle. Like we did just add on to York to, to bump it up. But, but even with that, that comes with struggle. I mean, it's, the traffic is a problem. It's the, the, we did add some core, some infrastructure as far as adding some additional hallways, but you just can't expand all the hallways that are there. So there's a, it's a challenge. So how much you can do.
Can't, you cannot overstate in two thousand and twenty-two, the importance of queuing space, getting cars off the road, moving quickly and safely. Every day that's becoming a bigger issue. I don't have any data to support it. But when you go out and you go to the, to the campuses themselves, it really seems like there's a larger percentage of parents and guardians picking up their children than ever before. You can see it uh compounded with the fact that our community is growing quickly, non-school related. It's just a lot of stress on the neighborhoods and traffic. And our camp, our principals really work hard to come up with good plans for safe loading, egress, moving of kids, but it's a challenge.
Well, and our officers as well, because now they're out there having to manage traffic above and beyond.
And superintendent sometimes.
And, and on that note, we're hiring crossing guards.
Tell your friends.
But you know, the, the other hand of that is ninety million dollars for another junior high, right? So.
Yeah, which is why in the last bond, so the last bond committee um looked at York specifically. And truthfully, like they came to a point where they said, we should probably build another junior high. But when it came to trying to trim the number to a smaller number, made the decision to do the addition, which was how, what was the cost of that addition, EZ, at York?
That was uh, it ended up being right at sixteen million.
Yeah, so they made the sixteen million dollar decision. Now, the reality though is that the problem's still not solved.
Yeah.
You know, so we, we may, the next committee is probably going to have to consider again, and there, there's no more additions at York. It's, it's too big at this point to go any bigger. So that's, but you know, you have, those are decisions you have to make. Just like we have to make those decisions, our family budgets, right? You can't afford everything at one time. So they went with the addition piece.
I, I know this is going to go over like a lead balloon, but based on what I'm hearing, is TB buildings more in our future too? Temporary buildings? Cause if you say we don't know where it's going, you gotta have space here and space there and space, and we can't build one big giant thing in the middle.
You know, I think, I think portables are going to be a, a real part of our solution. The, what I will say over the last several years is there have been more and more regulations and rules passed about portable buildings and, and it's, um, they're getting more and more expensive to implement and to set up according to the required rules regarding all the alarm systems and the different things. The other part, the other problem that we have too is, and I'm just going to say this, we've, you know, some of our buildings, we've, we've gone to great lengths to put in great security features. We have to disarm some of them because of all the traffic we're sending back in and out of the buildings. And so, um, that's not ideal. And, and so a lot of our buildings, we have the capacity and some of them are, the, the newer models, we design them for portables to go in the backyard, some of our, and you, you've seen, I've been putting the year up there, I don't know if you've noticed, but some of these were built, like McCullough is a good example, in the seventies, we didn't think about safety the same way we think about safety today. And so we have to deal with different models built in different years. You go, I'll go back to the high schools. Um, and you can kind of see the ages. Um, you know, we have Oak Ridge is the eighty versions. We have the nineties versions out there and a, a sixty version that's been added on to several times and being basically rebuilt um in front of us. So we do deal with different kind of designs and they offer different features and challenges. But at the end of the day, I don't think we're going to be out of the portable building business anytime soon.
And they, they serve a great role when you, as you, you, you grow into an area. Or like in, in some of these areas where like at the Woodlands High School, for example, where you say, oh, we're at a hundred and four percent, but we expect it to come back down. We wouldn't build up to today if we think it's going to come back down. To use three or four portables for a few years makes good sense. As Chris said, the portable world is different. They're expensive now. They used to be a cost-effective means of, of managing these things. And what's the cost of a portable?
Great question.
Like a twenty-five student.
Well, most of the portables we buy now are doubles. So there's two classrooms. For a new portable installed turnkey, furniture, technology, delivered ramps is around two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. For a double portable, that's a, that's a new double portable. A used, which is the way we go, which you cannot tell much difference between used and new, is right at one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars turnkey for two classrooms, double portable. You know, as, as a campus principal, I was happy to have portables.
Sure.
And, and campus principals are always asking for portables. But boots on the ground, being a principal, it does cause some programmatical challenges. Just thinking about weather, safety, moving people in and out, you become basically an armchair meteorologist, Neil Frank, watching the weather. I mean, you can never let it get out of your.
I remember walking out there with you and seeing that plethora of orbitals out there and just realizing the chaos that was probably created when you change classes and things like that. And like you said, the weather and just the safety of the kids being out there. I can see where it's kind of very hard to manage.
They also do not add to the core capacity of the building.
Correct.
So if you have a building and has a cafeteria built for twelve hundred kids and, and you portable it up to fifteen hundred, you, you still don't have room.
Right.
For passing periods in the hallways or in the cafeteria.
And the parking lot only holds so many cars for the teaching staff, you know, everything is not necessarily scaled.
We, we don't use bond funds to buy portables.
Right.
You know, because it's not a permanent solution. So then how do you budget that also?
And now, not to, not to also be robust, but now mentioning the stress on your bathrooms.
Yes.
Infrastructure, yeah.
It's a big deal. Waterfountains, bathrooms. But you know, the kids are resilient. The kids have a good attitude and the teachers have a good attitude. But when you're a principal, it can never get far from your mind.
Right, right.
Mr. Emin, did you have?
Well, I was just going to say, in, I'm pulling from memory, it seems like the add-on for the two hundred seats, I think I saw somewhere at the Woodlands High School, that was a ten million dollar project. The Woodlands High School, I think that new wing, I think I saw a couple. Ten million, there's two hundred seats, I think I read somewhere tonight added. Well, that's fifty thousand a seat per chair. Where these portable buildings, if there's one seventy-five divided by double, two, you know, two classes of twenty-five, twenty-five fifty, that comes to thirty-five hundred dollars a chair. So I know, I get it's expensive, but thirty-five hundred per chair student turnkey is way better than fifty thousand.
But the, the.
Per chair.
What was built at the Woodlands High School was science labs and robotics labs, not, not just portable classroom, like not just classroom. It was all specialty space.
Yeah, and again, I, I think whatever it is, it is, but I'm just thinking, this portable building may be, like you said, we're, we're going to be stuck in this for a while.
Yeah, I, I, I will tell you, as the guy that goes out and speaks to parents, they hate portable buildings.
Do they really?
Oh, my goodness.
Mm-hmm. What do the kids think? Cause I love the portable buildings when I was there. Get out of school for a little bit and walk out there.
But when they get rained on and those things, like I can just tell you, like the parents, parents do not like portable, because as Chris mentioned, we have to disable security features of our buildings. So.
Well, this is a discussion big in this, but maybe some, some kind of figuring out some kind of walkway that's covered or in, in the design. Cause you, you can't just throw them out like when we were kids, out in the field.
Right.
Three hundred feet away from the building and no fencing. So I get that, but.
On some campuses, it's a shorter jaunt to you and from, but some older campuses or just depending on the configuration, it may be a little further. I had a kid who loved me. I was good friends. It was his mentor. And he's still upset with me because his suede shoes got wet coming in and out.
His blue suede shoes?
It, they were red actually. But it does rain and you know, you try, you know, you'll do some creative things as a principal to try to move kids in and out before the weather cell hits.
Sure, we, I could appreciate that, yeah.
You have a little armchair Neil Frank.
Yeah.
All right, let's look at the intermediates.
We'll kind of hit the intermediates, just a quick overview. Again, our intermediates are very tight. You can see all the, the campuses that are over um one hundred percent. Won't, won't read them all to you. Um, but certainly we have some crowding. We, we will, um, now when we have a K six, I break out the intermediate enrollment separate from the elementary, just so you can kind of, kind of see that. Um, but some of those intermediates, um, again, generally we have a little bit of room at some of our campuses, but, but they're running pretty full.
Is the Veterans Memorial, is that going to be an intermediate?
It's going to be an intermediate.
It's not on here.
Yes, it's not on here.
So there's, so there's some capacity.
We will, and I, and I have that on this slide. Uh, we are, we are currently at ninety-seven percent capacity. We utilize sixteen classrooms. We will open Veterans Memorial Intermediate in two thousand and twenty-three, which will relieve Grangerland Intermediate, which is currently at a hundred and ten percent capacity. And we've done that, as Dr. Noel mentioned, we've often, when we've seen rapid growth in an area, when we know it can get crowded, we'll let it get crowded. Then when we split the school, it actually makes it easier. And we did that when Cox opened the Clark and, um, but you can go back to this one. You can see, uh, Clark's already at a hundred and eight percent. Uh, and that just opened a few years ago. Uh, and we'll talk about Grand Oaks a little bit more here in a second. But we will gain uh several seats with Veterans Memorial. And uh that will alleviate for Grangerland. We will be adding three hundred intermediate seats on the west side of Conroe when we open up Gordon Reed Elementary School. So we pick up three hundred more intermediate seats here. Um, we are projected to have an intermediate enrollment of roughly twelve thousand by two thousand and twenty-eight, which will be at one hundred and five percent of our capacity when you include Veterans Memorial and the additional Gordon Reed's uh seat. So, uh, we know that we're going to need about two thousand more intermediate seats in the next few years. And so just again, you know, this is very, you know, with that preliminary part, we're starting to think about where are we with growth? And what do we think we're going to need in the future? We'll get a clearer picture in the next couple of years, obviously. Time gives us always a better picture, right? People move in, now we know they're here. But, uh, we're just at this point kind of seeing what we have and where we think we have needs. Shifting gears to elementary school, you know, we certainly have several schools that are over capacity. And you can see a few that jump out. Uh, you know, Bradley's at one hundred and seven percent, Broadway's at one hundred and thirty-seven percent. Creighton is at one hundred and thirty-two percent, Bush is at one hundred and sixteen percent, Ford is at one hundred and thirty-two percent. Now, some of this, uh, we've gone back and also adjusted a little bit of our capacities to reflect our actual enrollment programs. So, um, that's part of it. And so, you know, a couple of years ago, Ford was showing an enrollment of uh almost eight hundred capacity. And we've gone back and we, we looked at their building and how their space is set up and what it can be used for. And the answer is it's really not eight hundred, it's really closer to seven hundred. So we've adjusted that. They have currently eleven portable classrooms in place to serve their students. And that's an area that's rapidly grown. Even though there's not been a lot of development, there's been some apartment complexes that have come in and we've just seen density go up. So again, some of these are hard to predict because they did, we didn't see a bunch of new homes come in, but all of a sudden here come the kids. Um, but we saw a lot of, uh, some density in uh family, multifamily housing. Gee Singers currently at a hundred and twenty-seven percent, but we'll get relief with opening of Gordon Reed. And then this, this is the rest of the elementary group, just kind of, kind of going through. I'll mention a few. Uh, Powell's certain, sitting at a hundred and ten percent, um, but they should level off. Um, you know, we're going to get a little bit of relief. Um, when we open the new elementary in the Grand Oaks feeder, you can see Snyder, I already mentioned Broadway, but Snyder's at a hundred and thirty-three percent. Stewart, we know is over capacity, but we're going to open a Gordon Reed, so they will be addressed next year. So our current elementary enrollment is twenty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-five students. We have one hundred and twenty-one portable classrooms at use in the elementary level. Seventeen of those campuses at or above one hundred percent capacity. We will be adding six hundred and fifty elementary seats serving the west side of Conroe feeder. Remember the other three hundred and twenty-five were intermediate seats for Gordon Reed. Uh, we will add nine hundred and twenty-five seats with the opening of the new elementary school, which is Flex twenty-two. That's going to be off of uh Lexington in the Grand Oaks area. So that, that elementary's coming uh in two thousand and twenty-three. After that, we still have one elementary left in the bond and that'll either be a twenty-four or a twenty-five project. Um, and so we know we still have one left. Now, this one that's going in Grand Oaks will provide relief for Broadway and Snyder. And you can see they're both at more than one and a third and uh it, they are crowded. And you talk about infrastructure, so we gotta, we gotta make it one more year next year at those two campuses. Bradley's also at a hundred and seven percent. So we'll be, we'll be uh working through that. Can't wait to get that campus open.
I got a quick question.
Yes.
Did I see a slide or two back? It had intermediate enrollment is twelve thousand?
Projected.
And then uh elementary's at twenty-six?
Currently.
Okay, should we be like really alarmed? Cause aren't those kids going to be in a year or two in fifth and sixth?
So, but, so they're going to come through, but we're serving a lot more grade levels. So that, there's, there's different grade span.
Pre-K through four.
So we're counting.
Five and six.
Yeah, but on the, on the intermediates, if we're already at a hundred and some percent capacity.
Well, we're worried, that's what I'm saying. We're, we're going to need, we're going to need two thousand more seats in intermediate.
Raiders hit fifth and sixth grader in the next three or four years.
Absolutely.
Yes.
We're, we're going to double, potentially double the intermediate capacity and we're already there now.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to need, we're going to need more than two thousand seats to serve what's coming.
And that's like sooner than later.
Yeah, it won't be double because the elementary numbers are, are five grade or sixth grade.
Yeah, pre-K.
And the intermediate's only two grade levels. So it, it's, those numbers don't, it won't just roll up to double it up. But it will be, we're going to see growth, absolutely. Like I said, two thousand kids at least, which is two schools.
So, and we're at a hundred percent capacity in our elementaries today. And uh, so we're full. We don't have a lot of wiggle room. You know, we'll probably, you know, we don't have a solution for Bush. I mean, I, I really anticipate that we'll be coming to you next year with a, a rezoning solution is about the only thing that we can really offer at this point. And, and you can see, I'll, I'll, you know, just to point out a couple of things, Oak Ridge Elementary's at, at capacity. Howzer's at, uh, got a little bit of room, but you know, we're running out. And so we might have to look at bringing a few students from Ford to Howzer. And so, um, we may be coming back with a couple of minor in addition to the rezoning that we'll have to do for the Grand Oaks Elementary School. So we'll, we'll take a look at those areas uh as well that need some tweaking.
What'd you say about Bush? I'm missing Bush.
So Bush, Bush has had some really rapid growth. Um, and they're at one hundred and sixteen percent. They're still going to keep growing a little bit. They'll probably peak about one twenty-five, I'm thinking, one twenty-eight. And so we're not at capacity yet. We haven't hit the peak and they're out of room. And again, that's one of those schools where, you know, I will tell you too, one of the things that, that I'll mention that, that really is uh different, not all of our elementaries have pre-K programs. And I'm going to have a slide, I'll just mention that, but not all of the elementaries have pre-K programs. And not all of our elementaries have their own gym. And those kind of things really impact what you can do during the day with your students.
That's a, that's a very significant, the gym piece plays a big role in overall capacity and overall infrastructure. Because if they don't have the gym, then they have two hours of the day that nobody can go to PE because that's the cafeteria. And so you, you reduce the number of overall kids you can have in the building because they can't get to the, and that's a required course and we don't, we can't get there. And so it's those older buildings and that, I think that's another one of those pieces, like a future bond committee you have to look at. We were adding gyms this year at the two intermediates that don't have gyms. Uh, so now all of our intermediates will have them. But then now we'll have elementary, specifically the old, older elementaries that, um, that will not have the gym and like Bush is a good example. You know, there's some of these schools that are already crowded and they don't have that, that extra piece of infrastructure. It creates issues for them.
And specifically to address Bush, there are four single portables at Bush. One portable is not occupied. We have it pre-placed to be ready for growth at Bush.
Let me ask you something. What's the difference between Bush and a Ford or Bush and a, um, one of these Broadway? One of these others at a hundred and thirty-seven percent. What is, what will be, what's the difference here? Why would Bush is a priority over those other ones?
Well, we have, I mean, Bush is on, Bush is only in the discussion because we don't have a solution in the future. So we have a solution coming for Broadway and Snyder. Um, we don't have a, we may have a rezoning solution for Ford and Bush, is what I'm saying. That we don't have a, a new elementary that we're going to open, that we're going to uh be able to solve with.
We just mentioned that the whole Woodlands uh feeder is starting to decline a little bit, right? Why wouldn't we have some sort of rezoning that we could do in the, within the Woodlands school?
Well, we did, well.
I mean, I tell you, Derrichin's shy.
It's a great, it's a great question. We have, we do have a little bit of room at Derrichin. We have a little bit of room at Bucklue.
Bucklue's next door to Bucklue.
Yes, we did rezone a new neighborhood going in over off Old Conroe Road to Bucklue. So we wanted not take all the Bucklue seats because we anticipate about a hundred future students coming to Bucklue. So we did a lot of rezoning in the Woodlands a few years ago. We've done some things. We've added, um, for example, uh, Derrichin is a good example. It was probably running at eighty percent capacity a few years ago. It's over ninety-two percent. I go back, ninety-two percent is full. And um, Derrichin is pretty full today. How do we fill it up? We put pre-K there. So we're serving that side of the district with pre-K. We also added a bilingual program at Derrichin. We rezoned Tough. Tough's filled up gradually. We, we've moved the neighborhood out of Bush into Bucklue. So we have to leave some room at Bucklue for growth. Um, Bush is a little bit over the top. We've got very limited options, but we probably could move fifty, sixty students out of Bush to Derrichin and fit. So those are options for us.
And well, the Bush is an example of a small site, like the, the number of portables that can go there is finite.
That's, that's finite.
Yeah, there's no more adding.
Yeah, David is like that as well. I can't get, we can get zero portables into David. David is like that as well, I can't get, we can get zero portables into David. So we have, we have no margin for error at David Elementary.
Right.
Yeah, also worth mentioning is, when you add portables, and Bush is a good example, you don't want to add too many. First off, you have to be able to get them in and out. Second off, the more you add, the more playground space or space for maneuvering you take away. And it, Bush is a good example of that, we're matched.
Could you go to the next slide and, oh.
Whoops.
There, there we go. And talk a little bit about Sachma and Powell, because you didn't mention it.
Well, and, you know, Powell's one that, again, we worried about. We did move the pre-K program to create a little bit of room there. It, it has jumped up this year, and it's something we're watching. And again, I think we think, you know, multifamily housing is playing a part of that. So we're seeing changes in, in housing patterns and where people live. We are gonna keep an eye on that and watch it. So it, it, it's done a pretty quick increase, so we'll see if it comes back down, if it balances, or what happens with that. Sachma, you know, it's, it's really not a surprise for us. It kind of, it, it's, it's kind of fulfilled what we thought could happen, which is we saw more large families move into that area to take advantage of a K-six. And that's usually what happens. And so we saw a very rapid increase in, and also an increase in the number of students per household. So Sachma's filled up very quickly. And it's something, you know, we've, we've, you can see they have two portables, we've got a little bit of room there. We've got a couple of years to kind of get a feel for how that might play out. But generally, I would say the Oak Ridge area is, is kind of snuck up and started filling up the last few years. And it, and it's interesting to watch, there's, there's only a little bit of development, you know, the, the areas that are still being developed, there's some apartments coming in. Some apartments came in over down by Rayford. There's, there's a still a section of the Meadows that's being added, and not a very big section, but there's still a section left to come in. And then, of course, what's come in along the two forty-two corridor. And that's, and they're still building, so it's, it's, it's not done. And that's why a future campus solution down the two forty-two, we may have to come back a little bit and, and look at that.
Right, because Powell comes all, you know, Harper's Landing comes all the way up to Powell versus going right across the street to Sachma. And then, you know, we're still building out considerably in Harper's Preserve, which does go to Sachma. And so I'm just wondering how all of that.
Yeah, and there's some areas there, there's some areas that, that are closer to the forty-five, that are right there by Sachma, that still go to Oak Ridge. Because we didn't have room at Sachma. And so we've kind of played it, it's, it's actually holding, I would say it's holding as, as well as we could have planned. But it, it's, it's pretty much kind of unfolding the way we thought it would. And with the exception being is that, you know, we're still just seeing growth in other places, so it's, we just don't have any wiggle room.
Now, good question, do, I'm sorry, do you know if that road, if the David Vetter Road was extended into Harper's Preserve? Because I know that that was a discussion to kind of move back and forth through that Oak Ridge feeder.
It's not, it's not been completed.
Can you repeat the, the game plan for Broadway?
So when, when we open, twenty twenty-three, we will open a new elementary on Lexington. And that'll, that'll, and it'll be a major rezoning from Broadway, it'll involve Broadway and Sachma. And then to some degree may involve, I'm sorry, Snyder, sorry, Snyder, Broadway. And then to some degree we may touch Broadway or Burnham Woods some, but, but that's gonna, that whole Grand Oaks area is gonna get impacted.
Because they have thirteen hundred students as of today, which seems like too much.
It's way, it's way too much.
Yeah, way, them and Snyder both are unbelievable. And they have one more year they have to serve.
Yeah, and we gotta make one more year.
They do a wonderful job of managing it, but it's a lot.
We do need to add, and we have, we added a counselor at both those elementaries this year, and we, we've added an assistant principal for them as well. But it's, it's a lot to manage, it's too much. It's, you know, we really needed that school to open this coming year, and, but we gotta make it one more year. And that's generally kind of the theme, we're always about a few years behind. So elementary, our current elementary enrollment, I mentioned those things already. We do have some neat, some new seats coming with the opening of the Gordon Reed, and then we do have an elementary coming. And then we have one more after that. And the additional elementary in twenty-three will be opened either in the year twenty-four or twenty-five. It is the last campus in the two thousand and nineteen bond program. There is still, we just did, we opened Hope last year, and there's still some capacity right now at Mylum and Hope and San Jacinto and that south part, portion of the Canyon Creek feeder. So at this point, my recommendation is we start looking at that next priority. My recommendation is that we place Flex twenty-three north of one oh five, east of the loop. Because we need to provide some relief for Creighton. We said that that elementary would go to Canyon Creek feeder, and so we really need to target. Creighton needs relief, Austin needs relief. We also, because of its location, if it's close enough to Conroe, we can also use it to support some, some relief for Runyon, which is over capacity. Anderson, which is over capacity, and Patterson, which is rapidly coming to capacity. So I just put together, just, this is not what it'll look like, but this is like a sample of that. And so if you look at that green part of the map, that actually could be, for example, an attendance boundary that could provide relief to Austin and Creighton. You can see we pulled off some Anderson, that's further east, some of the Patterson attendance zone, which gave us some room at Patterson to move up some Runyon. And even move up a little bit of Wilkinson, because we know the Boy Scout camp's gonna continue to grow. I guess you call it by the name, Grand Central.
Grand Central Park.
Grand Central Park, so they're gonna, I call it the Boy Scout camp, but it's Grand Central Park, and it's gonna continue to grow. So that gives us a little bit of capacity. So that's just an example of us thinking about, when we started kind of playing with, where does that next elementary go? It needs to serve the east side of our district. And really, you know, looking at it at this point, that'd be my recommendation, is we go north so we can really help that growth that's going on in the one oh five corridor going east. And there's a lot of development going up on the e, the northeastern part of our district. And as you know, the lack of utilities and, and really a, a defined road system makes it difficult to find good sites there. So it'll probably end up being a little bit closer to Conroe. But it's something for us to really, we're starting to work on, and I think later on we'll have some options to look at in terms of sites. So by twenty twenty-eight, I'm gonna mention a little bit about pre-K. We, we, we will be near thirty thousand students based on projections. And that's with the two elementary campuses that are in the two thousand and nineteen bond coming online. So that's, that's beyond that, still a need for roughly another fourteen hundred seats, which is about two more elementary schools. And that's, that's in addition to the current projects. Now, I wanna say something about pre-K. In September of two thousand and nineteen, twenty, just to kind of take you back, we had a pre-K enrollment of fifteen hundred and twenty-two. And this required forty-five classrooms roughly to serve those students. And we began full-day pre-K for the twenty twenty-one school year. So that was our first year implementing the full-day pre-K. And our enrollment, and then of course that was the COVID year, the first year of the pandemic, our enrollment was fourteen hundred and fifty-seven by late January of twenty-one. So we actually lost enrollment, we had students who didn't show up, right? We had kids who didn't come.
But Dr. Hines, in the fifteen twenty-two, that was half-day.
That was half-day.
So if you really, kids come in the full day, you cut that fifteen twenty-two in half.
Yes.
So actually, you went up.
And that's what I'm saying, we, we could serve that students with forty-five rooms.
Right.
To, today, we need ninety-five classrooms to serve the seventeen hundred and fifty-one students that we currently have. That's roughly two schools. So we, we basically, and, and just to put that in perspective, we, when the bond planning, we didn't have full-day pre-K. Now we have full-day pre-K. So there's like one entire school that we need just seats, just to serve that program that we expanded. And, you know, and I just, I, I don't know if this will happen or not, you hear discussion about universal pre-K, you know, being available to anybody who wants it. And, and certainly we've seen, I think, more and more evidence that there's gonna be interest in that, as our children have been delayed in their development because of the pandemic. And so we have students that don't get as much, they don't get out as much, they don't have as much introduction to stimulus and speech and physical activities. And so if that happens, just to put that in perspective, that would require an additional one hundred and fifty-three classrooms above and beyond what we do. And that's another three schools roughly. So I just wanted to.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, if that happens, you have to think about that. Like if that comes out, and they say, we're gonna fund full-day pre-K for everybody, that, that'll be great, like they'll pay, we will get funded for the teachers and those things. But there's not gonna be any funding for those buildings. And that's roughly a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of buildings that would, you know, that, that would be required to, to make that happen. So that's just something we have to watch for. Now, academically, I think we would all agree that it would be a good idea. So it's hard for us to sit here and say we wouldn't want it, because we would, but it, that would be a real challenge for us to figure out how to accommodate those students. And what, what would that look like? Would it be pre-K centers or what? There'd be so many questions, but it's a, it'd be a significant impact, you know, on, on our building side, which never gets funded when these things happen. We didn't get any funding for full-day pre-K for the classrooms, like it didn't happen, so.
And is pre-K just four-year-olds?
Yes.
Yes.
And we do have an early childhood program for students that qualify for special services, so some qualify earlier as three, you know. I will also mention, just even things like our discussion earlier about adjusting the, the class size ratio at intermediate, which is needed. Because we're, we are higher than the state average and significantly, and so really looking at trying to bring us closer to that average. But that, that will result in, let's just say we hire ten more teachers, that's ten more classrooms we just created a demand for. If, when we lower the pre-K ratio, if we do that, that will enable us to hire more teachers up front, but those teachers will need a room. And they need stuff to go in those rooms. So there is a cost associated with those things above and beyond the personnel. So just, I, I did wanna throw up this real quick, the Grand Oaks feeder, kind of an overall chart. I would say, you know, we have, we are crowded everywhere, and this is not just a single out anyone, but I would, if I had to say, you know, who's probably the most crowded overall, top to bottom? You know, Conroe feeder being second close, a close second place. But, but Grand Oaks offers some unique challenges, and we talked about a few. But you can see, we are, we are over capacity really everywhere except at Cox Intermediate right now. And so we may have to look at that next year when we look, work on the elementary, might have to play with the intermediate boundary, might have to tweak it a little bit, which will be difficult. But certainly it's something that we might have to look at. So just a few summary of things, and I know I've taken up enough of your time, but some areas that are, we're gonna need to be looking at for future solutions. Bush, share that, Reeves, here in Conroe, they're currently at a hundred and five percent, they've been very stable the last few years. But there's several large multifamily units coming into the Reeves feeds, feeder zone, and so we're gonna be watching that carefully. But, but we, we really are, we, we don't know how fast those will produce children, but, but they could, they could impact Reeves quickly. Ford, we've been watching, again, that's been a combination of some apartment complexes coming in, as well as us reducing their capacity. And then Oak Ridge Elementary is certainly one we're watching. Sachma, we've mentioned that, the whole Grand Oaks feeder pattern, we've, we've talked about those. So we'll keep, we'll keep an eye on those and, and really be looking forward to some solutions.
Now, Oak Ridge Elementary, remember on the other slide, it had a capacity of five seventy-five, which was significantly lower than a lot of the other schools. Is there reason?
It's just a tiny little.
It's a one-off design, it's not one of our, you know, that we have common.
Reeves is another kind of very uniquely designed school. You know, it seems to me if we can redesign it, but you can't redesign it and build it and still serve the kids that go to school there at the same time.
And, and Runyon's another one of those small campuses, and we've added on a little bit to Runyon when we did the last. So we've created a little bit of capacity, but that's one of those examples, examples of a building where, you know, it's just, it's just rough. At some point, we don't have the, all the queuing space that we need and some of those other things. But these are some areas we're just gonna keep an eye on, be working on. This is a, and I outlined it, you can see this is just a Google map, but, but I, I did outline the creek and the river to kind of give you an idea. That's the dog leg that we always talk about that is the Grand Oaks feeder. And you can see, you know, there's still a lot of green space in there. And so as the, as the road system, as they go further towards the fifty-nine, there are plans to keep developing that area. And right now, the plan is to bring up, you know, a major thoroughfare and, and bring it all the way back to fifty, to sixty-nine at some point. But there is a new development going in, which is part of where we would put the new elementary. We're also hoping to get another site, which could be either a junior high site or a ninth-grade campus site for the high school, which would make sense since it's so close to the high school. And we could probably, if we could get closer to the high school, it could save us some money on some other support facilities and parking.
It's ama, can you go back to that? It's amazing when you look all the way down, at that very bottom down there, you can see Deerbrook Mall from Conroe ISD. Like it's, we stretch all the way down to right there, you know, just, just to the north of Deerbrook Mall.
And when they punch through, it'll be faster for them to drive on down to Deerbrook.
It will be, way, way faster, yeah. But, you know, there's water on both sides, it's what's highlighted there, but, and, but at some point, it will become a moneymaker for somebody to develop it, and that's when they'll do it. You know, it's, they have to, they're gonna have to manage, you know, I, I know I lived off of Rayford Road back when I moved here in two thousand. And all the people that lived around me, they just started building Bender's Landing, and everybody said, oh, that place is just, there's no way, it's a swamp. You'll never, they'll never be able to build back there, and you can see what they've done. And so you just know that in time, they will find a way to manage it, and it will keep building.
And based on our current projections, we currently anticipate needing perhaps the following, I'd say this is very, it's all very preliminary at this point. But just starting to think about it a little bit, we, we, we know we need a high school for Conroe High School. We need a, probably a ninth-grade campus or a large addition at Grand Oaks High School. We're gonna need possibly two junior highs, maybe one if we converted CHS nine back to a junior high. At least two intermediate schools, at least two elementary schools, and could be three or more, especially if we talk about pre-K expanding. So, you know, we know there's a lot there, and I, and I know that adds up to a lot without even talking about other projects. So I just thought it'd be helpful to kind of start preparing people for some sticker shock later on, to, to talk a little bit about tonight, like what we see coming and what our needs are. So I just wanted to share that, and answer any questions if you have any.
Dr. No, can you remind us all too, our last bond referendum in two thousand and nineteen was for a total of?
Six hundred and fifty, seven, yeah.
And if I just added this up correctly, and I don't know that I did, just what we talked about is about eight hundred and fifty million at least.
Probably, yes, sir. Now, I'll also, just to kind of give you, frame of reference. You know, our neighbors have had bonds, and our, like Montgomery anticipating Montgomery calling a bond at three hundred and twenty-six million. We are over seven times larger than Montgomery ISD. Okay, now, we understand that our numbers look skewed anytime we do something, because we're so much bigger than everyone. But, you know, at three hundred and twenty-seven million, that would be like us doing two-point-four billion, which we would never, like, that's not where we are. But, but our sticker shock, like you said, at eight hundred or whatever it may be, eight hundred looks so much bigger than, than three hundred and twenty, yet we're seven times larger. So that's part of what we just have to understand. But, you know, the challenge is, it's a deal with this growth, but like we talked about earlier, we also have all these aging schools we have to maintain, you know, and, and keep them.
Nine hundred and ninety-nine million.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Can't say big.
Right. But that's part of what we, and we understand where, and we are a few years away from a bond. This is just, we, we see where we are, we're beginning to prepare, get a demographic study and see where this leads us.
But realistically, like Conroe High School was like six thousand by twenty-two days.
Conroe High School is.
How long does it take you to build a new high school? Like honestly, are we that far out, really?
So, well, the, the problem is it's about three years to build a high school. Now, what we did with Grand Oaks, and you know, Darren mentioned the fund balance, and that's part of what, I think another thing we'll have to consider with Grand Oaks. We, we started taking money from the fund balance and did a lot of the pre-construction work and the site work prior to the, prior to the bond ever passing. So that when the bond passed, EZ could, was already ahead of the process. So that may be something we have to consider in the futures, as we look at it, we might need to start pre-construction. Because if you, EZ, if we, from the moment you start the process, pre-construction, how long does it take to open a high school?
We, we would like to give the artifacts a year, but then we've got it right at three years, four years.
Yeah, so four years, so we could potentially knock a year of that off if we started early, which is what we did with Grand Oaks. But yeah, it's going to be a concern at Conroe High School, it's gonna be the.
No, no, it is a concern.
It is a, absolutely, it's going to be. It is a, absolutely, it's going to be, going to be really difficult to manage. And to give a frame of reference, I, I became the principal of Conroe High School in February of two thousand and ten, we had twenty-six hundred students there. Today, they're at forty-eight hundred, forty-seven something, almost forty-eight, yeah. So it's, you know, it's been a steady two hundred, two hundred and fifty a year, and it's, it's kind of ramping up. So, you know, if they're forty-seven hundred a day, you'd think four years from now, six thousand is real, it's a real number.
You're right.
So, okay.
Okay.
Any questions for Dr. Hines or any other questions or comments?
Just thanks everyone for being here.
Absolutely.
Thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
Thank you very much.
All right, the time is eight seventeen, and we will adjourn, thank you so much.